Good evening. We're going to call this special meeting of the Board of Education into order. Ms. Meeker, can you take the roll? Ms. Boucher?
Here.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Cotton?
Here.
Ms. Hastings?
Here.
Ms. Higgins is absent. Mr. Richards?
Here.
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Ms. Walsh?
Here.
And I am here. We have a forum. Thank you. Next item is our agenda, approving our agenda for the evening. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Ms. Hastings. Seconded, is there a second?
Second?
Second by Ms. Robinson. Is there any discussion or amendments?
Thank you. I would offer an amendment to the agenda as it is currently written. As it is stated, we have the opening of the meeting and then we have two separate public comments for each amendment. I propose that we have public comment for both Amendment One and Two at the same time.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Richards. Any further discussion?
Would we do that after we've discussed both amendments?
Just start with the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Any further discussion on the proposed amendment? All in favor?
Just a second. Sorry. I'd actually prefer to do it one at a time, even though I know it will take more time, because quite honestly, I have, I understand the First Amendment. I don't understand the reasoning of the Second Amendment, and I'd like people to explain it to me.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Any further amendments or discussion? All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're here tonight to hold a public hearing on two proposed charter amendments that were petitioned articles. We have two hours for testimony, limited to three minutes apiece. I will try and notify people so that they can be up. If you haven't signed in, Jill, can you raise your hand? Over there has the sign-in sheet, and she'll be bringing lists down. I ask that there be no demonstrations, no cheering, no clapping. Let's be respectful and keep this moving. After that, the Board will vote on putting the amendments on the ballot, which we are required by law to do, and then to vote on whether we will make a recommendation or not on the charter amendments. There, just a point of clarification, we had heard from some folks that they did not agree with the notice description of the amendments. Those will not be on the ballot. It will just be the amendments, as we have been advised by our legal counsel. With that, I will call up Liz Leahy, followed by Molly McCrum.
Can somebody do time?
Yeah. And again, time, three minutes apiece or shorter. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Might need to get a little closer.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you sound right.
Okay. So, I'm here to speak in opposition to the charter amendments, and I have three reasons why for that. The first one is that no other New Hampshire city has what's being proposed here, which is a requirement that the general population be a check on the authority of a city board, in this case, the school board. And I think that's for really good reason. First, the Board makes these decisions based on countless reports, meetings, financials. Some of the information is probably not available to the public, and the average citizen is just not paying attention at the level required to make decisions about where schools are located, real estate decisions, those types of things. Second, it creates a major timing issue. If all decisions will be either potentially delayed for up to a year until there's a city election, or the city is required to hold an expensive special election every time it wants to move a school, buy real estate, make an offer on real estate, that's going to cause the district to miss opportunities on the best terms for taxpayers, as well as potentially what's best for students. The second reason is this is really just an F, it's just a maneuver to block a current project. It's not really an earnest desire to improve the city charter. And so, given that backdrop, here, even if the charter amendments pass, the result that they want of blocking this current project isn't guaranteed, because there's no guarantee the amendments will have a retroactive effect, and we may need expensive litigation to figure that out. And even if the amendments are successful and the building is required, if we go forward to be built at Runlet, it will deny students what they need, which is a modern school that meets their learning needs, and it will also potentially deny the taxpayer the ability to get this at the best cost. So rebuilding at Runlet is just more expensive. There will be redundancies, and that we'll have to redo some of the process that the Board and Building Committee are already doing now at an additional expense. It's longer to build at Runlet. The longer people are working, the more we're going to pay them. That's more expensive. The cost of labor and supplies, as we have seen here, is just going up, and the longer it takes, the more expensive those supplies will be. And lastly, there is a risk of losing state funding if the district is not ready to proceed on the timeline that the state requires. So, that is why I am opposed to the charter amendments.
Thank you. Ms. McCrum, followed by Mr. Messini. And then Mrs. Messini.
Good evening. I am Molly McCrum. I live on Hayward Brook Drive in East Concord, and we have lived there for 12 years. I have three children in the district, and I also work in the district. I am opposed to the amendments for a variety of reasons. Limited flexibility, requiring a simple majority vote for relocation of public schools could hinder the flexibility needed to address urgent issues such as safety concerns, facility deterioration, or changing demographics. In situations where immediate action is required to ensure the well-being of students, the need for a public vote could delay necessary decisions. It would have increased bureaucracy. This amendment could lead to increased bureaucracy and administrative burden. The process of organizing and conducting a vote for every potential school relocation, although I don't see that happening, could consume time and resources that might otherwise be used for educational purposes. I think it's no secret that these amendments have come about as sort of a need, not a need jar, but a reaction to the proposed project of the new school, and while there are emotions and sentiments attached to it, will those same emotions and sentiments be there for other projects? And I just think overall, it's not the right move to make right now. Let me see, a couple more things. Cost implications, as Liz mentioned, delays, restricted property management. We elect these people to our school board. I trust them to make the best decisions. I personally was happy with the decision last winter. I wrote them an email. I sent letters. I wasn't always at these meetings, because it is six o'clock at night, and it's dinner, bath, and bedtime for my own three children. So that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Messini? Again, there's a sign-up sheet in the back if you would like to testify.
Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to make one clarification. The school board, the district cannot lose state school funding unless they flat-out reject to receive it. So that's inaccurate. In August 31st edition of the Concord Monitor, the school board placed a notice of this public hearing, which concerns two petitioned amendments to the school district charter. The wording of the two amendments created by the petitioners was accurately reported, but the language that the school board used to devise explanations of the amendments is quite negative. It says that the amendments seek to, quote, "remove the authority of the school board." When I was a kid, my mom used to sing a song from the World War II era that begins, "You got to accentuate the positive and eliminate the negative." So let's do that. These amendments, far from being a negative removal of authority, positively empower voters with authority to make choices about their schools. Authority to choose locations that minimize the heavy load that taxpayers bear. To choose locations that will preserve forests, wildlife, and recreational trails. To choose locations that students can safely walk and bike to. To choose locations that do not add further traffic congestion and air pollution. Accentuate the positive. These amendments represent not a removal of authority, but rather a sharing of authority. Accentuate the positive. These amendments provide an opportunity for the school board to work with, not against, the voters who elect them and the taxpayers who pay the cost of public schools. Accentuate the positive. These amendments can write a new chapter of healthy communication and cooperation between the school board and the citizens, all for the betterment of the education of our kids and the well-being of our city. That's what I sincerely hope for. Thank you.
Rebecca Messini, filed by Steve Mikulowitsch. I should have this by now. I'm sorry.
The school board charter of Concord provides for the board to make all decisions autonomously. This is rare in New Hampshire. The sole decision-making power of a board may work well in the decision-making process and for all the stakeholders or constituents or citizens when all involved parties believe that the other parties that are involved are trustworthy, which means that they do what they say they can do, that the various parties are honest in what they say and value, and that the parties are reliable and care about the same interests. The time has come, I believe, when all the parties affected by the decisions of the Concord School Board have less trust in one another. Therefore, it's crucial that the charter be adapted in order that the citizens of Concord are empowered and have a greater part in the farthest-reaching decisions, which are the ones the amendments speak to. It is time that we, as citizens, are not only able to have voice as to what we believe, but also have a vote in the school board decisions that most dramatically impact all stakeholders: the students, employees, families, homeowners and taxpayers, citizens, and the city. The time for a school board that makes decisions with no provisions for or requirements that citizens or anyone else be a part of any decision has passed, and the support of the more than 1,500 Concord voters who signed petitions so that the two amendments are on the ballot in November is the first step to acknowledging that. Voting yes for the amendments on the ballot in November is the way forward to empower citizens and to bring about more accountability to all.
Mr. Russell will be after, next.
Okay. My name is Steve Mikulowitsch. I live in Ward 10. I believe that Concord voters should vote yes on the proposed Concord Charter amendments. You have heard a number of concerns related to the need for citizens and taxpayers to have a vote on decisions that have a huge and costly impact on the community. I would like to comment regarding very important traffic and safety issues related to the proposed Broken Ground site, which will have such an impact on the community. Yesterday, Ms. Boucher posted an announcement about the formation of a Traffic Transportation Committee that will be meeting in mid-October and invited citizens to apply for participation. It is unclear what purpose that would serve, since the Concord School Board voted to choose the Broken Ground site on December 6, 2023. Would the findings of this committee have the potential to cause the Concord School Board to reconsider their site decision? This committee should have convened prior to the December 6 vote, so that each proposed site could be studied and compared. I have reviewed the traffic study conducted by VHB Engineering Consultants at both Runlet and Broken Ground on September 6th and 7th, 2023. Several of the problems noted in the study are in line with those I am voicing. Interestingly, they listed next steps, but in spite of numerous requests, the Concord School Board, we have heard nothing about these additional traffic studies, other than the reference made about them by the architects. Who conducted them? What area was covered? Were any done during the winter, when inclement weather adds to the dangerous conditions? Who was the city contact consulted about the study parameters? Once again, the primary traffic concern for the Broken Ground site: overall volume of traffic and traffic backups in the immediate and surrounding areas, excessive speeding on Portsmouth Street, extremely dangerous conditions at the four-way stop intersection of Portsmouth Street, South Curtisville Road, cars creating a third lane on South Curtisville Road when entering and exiting, thereby driving into the path of oncoming vehicles, further narrowing of the roads caused by snow piles. In winter months, and exhaust fumes from idling vehicles that impact nearby homes pollute the atmosphere. Similar situations would arise with a Portsmouth Street entrance. In addition, and finally, to safety concerns related to traffic issues, I have additional concerns about how approximately 1,500 students and staff could quickly and safely be removed from three buildings in the Broken Ground area in the event of an emergency, and where would they be taken? These could include such emergencies as a nearby fire, pipe leak, of water or gas, toxic waste spill, bomber shooting threat, dangerous and possibly armed persons in or near any of the buildings, a careless hunter, an upset student running off into the nearby woods, or an airplane disaster as Broken Ground is on the approach to the Concord Airport. I know that all the school board members, school administrators, and staff, like all of us, have deep concern for the safety of all of Concord's children. Sadly and tragically, those situations once thought unthinkable are now becoming all too frequent events. In my opinion, after doing significant research, conversing with many community members, and reviewing reports, the current Runlet location would be much safer site for the proposed new middle school, and that is one of the many reasons why we should vote yes on the amendments one and two. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
Members of the Board, I'm Charles Russell. I live on Columbus Avenue in Ward 5. I'm here to speak on the constitutionality of what is the amendments are. Many times, we hear people say something's unconstitutional, but you all took an oath to uphold the Constitution when you became the elected officials in the community, and the Bill of Rights, Part 8 says, "Office is a government. Are there substitutes and agents in all times accountable to the people? Government therefore shall be open, accessible, accountable, and responsive." Article 10, entitled "Right of Revolution," "Whenever the ends of government are perverted and government, public liberty manifestly endangered, and all other means are redressed are ineffectual, the people may and of right ought to reform the old." There's another section, which I won't read. Article 39 talks about changes in town charters and referendum required. Basically says, before you change the charter, the people have to vote. 49B, "Purpose and intent of home-room municipal charters," talks about the people should have the right to adopt the form of government that best addresses their needs. 49B 5, which is what this amendment was brought under, Section 5, talks about, once the petitions are certified, which they have, you put a notice out, you have a hearing, and it's ministerial. You can't change the language, and you have to put it on the ballot. There's no vote of, "We're not putting on the ballot," as I read the law. Change is inevitable during, just beyond my lifetime. 1949, the city charter changed. They put in municipal government. They put in the city manager in 57, 1957. They went back to the city manager. 1967, they shifted back. In 1990, they shifted to a popularly-elected mayor. The school charter was put in in 1960. That took away the town meeting, school district meeting that still goes on up in Merrimack Valley, and took away the people's right to approve the budgets. In the 1950s, it may well be that the people voted on the bonding and where Runlet was put back, and perhaps somebody can do some research and bring that forward. But reform is what this petition looks to do. It is mandatory. The number of signatures were there. They were recorded in less than half the time that was necessary. So, change, why now? Because I spoke in December and said, "Things at rest, stay at rest." No one has ever adequately explained why we need to move the school.
10 seconds.
The cost? $80 million on June 2021. Now it's up to $176, and nobody has dared speak and tell us-
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Deborah Samaha, filed by Daniel Riley. Again, if you would like to sign up to speak, there is a sign-up sheet in the back.
Good evening. I'm here as a proud resident of Concord and someone who has paid taxes in Concord for 45 years. I have raised two children in the Concord School District. Up until this past December, I had confidence in my school board. I was proud of their complete autonomy and felt they were good stewards of our children and money. Now for some F-words. I am frustrated with your apparent lack of appreciation for the public who you claim to represent. You know what your charge and role should be representing your public. You have forsaken us. I have been forlorn attending multiple meetings and watching virtual meetings, only to hear you cut people off and dismiss their concerns. I have written to you asking for answers to questions, such as, "What are the true costs of infrastructure for the new site at Broken Ground?" Only to be told they are embedded in the budget. Which leads me to fiscal. You have been in charge of this timeline and the project, and it is you who have not been good stewards of timing and the costs you have incurred due to your inaction. Now you are blaming the community for delaying the project and saying, "We are costing you money" by not going along with your decision to relocate at Broken Ground. Most recently, we heard testimony against the charter amendments that this may get tied up in court. So now you're taking the community to court on our dime? You have been fiscally irresponsible with taxpayer money. In closing, I can say I'm fed up. Yes, it's a shame that we, as a community, have to ask for a change in your charter so that we, as residents, can be empowered to have a role in the school relocation decisions. In a perfect world, you could have listened to the community input and acted in a reasonable and responsible manner. You have chosen otherwise. So yes, I fully support the two amendments as proposed.
Thank you. Mr. Riley, filed by Cecilia Stanley, or Cecil Stanley?
Hi. My name is Dan Riley. I am a taxpayer here in the city of Concord, and I am for this charter amendment. I am part of the great silent majority. Moving forward, we need to come together as a community and let all the taxpayers come together and decide on how the money is spent on big-ticket items for the school. We have to keep in mind that we can't tax senior citizens out of their homes. Shortly, I will be a senior citizen. I would like to stay in Concord for my golden years. Also, we have to remember, and taxpayers have to talk about, the three elementary schools that were built about 14 years ago that aren't paid off. You know, we're going forward with this project and maybe other projects. What is that going to cost? So I think the people need to decide. And also, with city infrastructure costs for this project and future projects, that has to be laid out on the table with transparency. We have to know what those costs are going to be, because it's not going to be free. And lastly, I'd like to say is, we can't keep spending money we don't have. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia Stanley, filed by Lynn Bloomquist? Cecil Stanley? Springfield Street? Okay, moving on. Lynn Bloomquist?
Hello. My name is Lynn Bloomquist. I am in Ward 10 and have very significant concerns about the traffic patterns, the increased traffic flow, parents bringing kids to school, dropping them off, the buses, the whole infrastructure issue in that area. It looks large, perhaps, on paper, but when you take a look at the neighborhoods that that's going to impact, it's very, very tight. I'm in favor of these amendments. I think it's important for the voters to be aware of what their school board is doing. Yes, you have meetings. They're public meetings. Yes, we are invited to participate in them, but not everybody has that opportunity, and they don't necessarily know what's going on. Personally, I think the school as proposed is very luxurious. It's beautiful, but I'm not sure that it's something that we need, want. Yes, but need, no. I support these two amendments. I think it's important to recognize that times have changed, needs have changed, wants have changed. Certainly, our population is changing. Our student population is going to be changing, and we just need to take care of what we need first, pay for it, and then take a look at what we want. It's just like managing your budget at home. Can't buy everything on credit.
Tom Bloomquist? Oh. Rebecca Lovell, filed by Chris Gallidari?
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Lovell, and I currently live in Ward 8 on Quincy Street. I'm speaking out against the proposed amendment changes to the charter. These changes are reactionary to the school board vote on the location of the new middle school. Attaching the proposed changes to feelings on where the new middle school should be placed is short-sighted and with long-term impact. These changes will no doubt delay the current project. A new middle school for Concord has already been in the works for the last eight years, and our community and the education of our children should not have to wait any longer. The delay could increase costs overall to the project through supplies and missed opportunities on state funding. These additional costs will be passed on in a larger-than-planned increase in taxes for residents to make up the difference. The delay could cause the current Runlet to become uninhabitable, whether due to building age and deterioration or severe weather. What will we do if there is an unplanned ice snowstorm that causes a roof collapse? This would require a creative solution and could create a nightmare for families in the district. These proposed changes will hinder the ability of the school board to make future decisions. School board members are elected positions, and the voters chose representatives. Why do voters need to micromanage school board members? School board members are elected to gather information and make decisions on what's best for the community. School board members have access to information that voters may lack awareness of or have access to. Let's be real, most people do not have the bandwidth to keep up on everything that is happening with Concord, work full-time, and raise a family. These changes will just add additional red tape to an already complicated process of public education. In 2022, the Charter Commission found support for an autonomous school board. This allows the school board to make decisions in a timely manner. Think about it. Is one of Concord's schools need to be closed immediately? How would the board be able to make the right decision for the community in a timely manner? The school board hosts public comments, such as this meeting, to aid in their decisions. Furthermore, an autonomous school board provides the opportunity for school board members to collaborate and discuss district items while gaining different viewpoints, which is amazing for everyone working and living in the community. Change is hard. Concord is growing and changing faster than a lot of people care for. The way the current proposed amendments are written remind me of playing games with my kids, when they decide it's time to change the rules, because they are losing. Not all change is bad. I remember a time when there was a lot of opposition to the Main Street project. The mayor and city council made the choice to move ahead with the project anyway. Concord has an award-winning Main Street that many other towns wish they had. Shouldn't the school board continue to have an opportunity to make the best decisions for the kids and families of Concord? There are many of us in Concord that want to move forward and finally have, build the middle school that our kids deserve. It's time to accept what our elected officials voted for and move on. Thank you.
Chris Gallidari, filed by Amanda Savage. Again, if you'd like to sign up, you can sign up in the back or raise your hand if you can't get there, and someone will bring you the sign-up sheet.
Good evening. My name is Chris Gallidari. I'm the parent of two children in the Concord Public Schools, one at Concord High and one at Kristen McCalliff. I support both charter amendments, and I support both charter amendments because they are a vote of no confidence in the school board. Members keep talking about the dire effects that could result if these amendments pass, but let's look at the causes of these amendments. We are here for- We are here for one reason and one reason only, because last December, as far away from this year's school board elections as it was possible to do so, six members of the board, one a lame duck with weeks left in his term, one who had been appointed, not elected, took it upon themselves to ignore the overwhelming public opinion about the location of a new middle school. If not for that decision, we would not be here tonight, and these amendments would not be on the ballot this fall. Elected officials who make the choice to disregard public opinion have an obligation to explain their decision to the citizens they are ignoring and to offer good reasons for doing so. This board has not done that. In fact, one of the most striking things about last December's meeting was the conspicuous absence of any good reasons for building at Broken Ground. Instead, we got the spectacle of members acting out weird grudges against certain parts of the city? Can I get a show of hand from anyone who hired a babysitter to be here? No? I didn't think so. We got a lot of word salad about equity, which was pretty rich, coming from a board that began 2023 by kicking a member off the board for becoming homeless. Since that meeting, whenever anyone brings up traffic, buses, infrastructure, environmental impact, we don't get straight answers. We've heard members claim that delays or changes to the decision will lead to the loss of state building aid, but thanks to the outstanding reporting of the Concord Monitor, we know this is simply not true, and we also know that the amount of aid available will be far less than has been requested. For all these reasons and more, I feel that the board has shown that it can no longer be trusted to make decisions on its own. Over the last year, this board has earned the distrust of the citizens of Concord, and so it falls to us, as citizens, to take power back from them. Board members have been warning, the sky will fall, the White Mountains will turn to dust if these amendments pass. But let's be clear, if these amendments wind up costing taxpayers money, they will cost taxpayers money only because of the board's bad decision last December that made them necessary. If these amendments delay building a new middle school, they will delay building that new middle school only because of the board's bad decision last December. In fact, these warnings are scaremongering with little basis in fact. The only real effect of these amendments will be to encourage future school boards to act in accordance with public opinion and put schools where people want them to be put. And if the board had done that last December, we wouldn't have to be here tonight. Thank you.
Amanda Savage, followed by Amanda Carter?
Good evening, Amanda Savage, Ward 5. I am in opposition of these amendments. I agree with the first comments that were made by Liz. If these amendments pass, we potentially could delay the middle school project that is much needed. I think all of us agree, and if anyone has walked through the middle school, that it is a much-needed project. We must trust in the process, the building committee that they have gone through, the conversations and the meetings and the information that they've been given. We also need to trust in the process that we've elected this school board that is in front of us tonight. Each year, the cost of construction increases by 3%. This is nationwide, it's not regional, this is not dependent on the economy. It is a known fact within our industry of construction that it does increase 3%. If this amendment passes and the location changes due to this amendment pass, we reset the clock on what progress has already been made and the efforts and all of the estimating and all the design. And just take in mind also, it may be a location, and some may be here because they're appalled about the cost of the construction of this project, but just know that they're in the process of what's called design development, so they still have another round of estimating to go through. Again, the cost of construction is not going to be cheaper tomorrow, or the next year, or the next. It puts a burden on us as a residents if we delay this project, if this amendment passes and the location passes, changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Carter, followed by Ellen Kenny?
Hi, my name is Amanda Carter, Ward 10. When obtaining signatures, the Concord Concerned Citizens provided twelve reasons to support their changes to the charter. As a citizen and cost estimator in the construction industry, I would like to address the first two. Number one, lack of transparency, not explaining why first $82 million proposal leaped up to $176 million. While I share a dislike for the price tag, there is not a lack of transparency. The pandemic has had a profound impact on construction costs. Explanations for these increases are available in public records and local news articles dating back to 2022. Number two, no explanation why district can't build $85 million middle school like Nashua just did. My company was involved with the Nashua Middle School project, which is currently budgeted at $92 million. This project benefited from several factors, two of which were pre-pandemic pricing and strategic purchasing. Materials were quoted and locked in before substantial increases. Materials facing expiration were purchased immediately and stored to avoid higher prices. Today's market conditions are significantly different, and we cannot expect to achieve the same cost savings. On a positive note, the general contractor for the Nashua Middle School is also scheduled to manage the Concord Middle School. Harvey Construction has been praised by the Nashua Board for keeping on top of costs. Their experience and expertise will be invaluable in navigating the current economic climate. It's impossible to predict the future, but after speaking with industry experts, price decreases are not expected. We are, however, starting to see a return to more moderate annual price increases, which are typically around 3% to 4%. I see this as an opportunity to explore creative solutions and negotiate with manufacturers and suppliers to achieve the best price under the circumstances. Halting the project could risk losing state funding and delays a much-needed middle school for our community. While I am proud of our community's dedication, it is crucial that these decisions are well researched and based on accurate current information. As a citizen, parent, and friend to those directly impacted, I stand in opposition to these charter amendments and support the autonomy of the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Kenny, and then Jeff Wells. Again, if you'd like to sign up, there's a sign-up sheet in the back.
Oops, if you don't... Does this still work? Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm going to sit down, because my printer broke. I have to read this on my phone, and it's like a number 10 font. And I'm nervous, and if I pass out, I'm that much closer to the floor. To start with, as an educator for more than twenty years in Concord, I want to note that the charter amendments that we're here to talk about are not designed to curtail the board's day-to-day autonomy, but rather to empower the citizens of our community to have a voice in the type of major decision that affects the health and livability and sustainability of the city that we share. I have lots of reasons why I think the vote on December 6 was a bad one, but my primary reason, and one that I know is shared by many of the petition signers, is environmental. We've just lived through our planet's hottest summer since record-keeping began. If things continue with this kind of trajectory, it will be the coolest summer some of our younger children will be able to remember by the time they're in middle school. We're living at a time with rapid loss of biodiversity and the consequent diminishing health of our ecosystems. All of this affects our health, that of our children now and in the future. I appreciate the hard work that the Sustainability Committee has put into drawing up plans for the future middle school. Sustainability, though, is more than geothermal heating systems and electric buses. A plan that begins with the bulldozing of 23 acres of forest, forests that sequesters carbon in both its trees and its soil, forests that provides wildlife corridors for our local fauna that we seek to protect, and nesting sites for migratory birds, does not deserve to be called sustainable. I know that there are members of the Sustainability Committee that are struggling with this same cognitive dissonance, but are trying to make the best through their input of a bad decision. I think we can do better than this, and for the sake of our children's future, we need to do better than this. One more thing. When the initial vote was made in December of last year, the board was voting with the understanding that the school would require the clearing of eight acres of trees, and I know this because when Mr. Richards made his closing remarks, he suggested that I could fight to save eight acres of trees in some other part of Concord. Two more sentences. As recent...
I'm going to wrap up.
As recently as June, Ms. Boucher talked about holding the board accountable for those acres. At the last meeting, we were told that about 23 acres of trees would be...
Could you wrap up, please?
Cut.
Thank you.
I just want to make the comparison, an acre is approximately a football field, so that is the amount of deforestation we're currently talking about. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wells, followed by Tracy Lesser?
I'll be brief, okay? I'm here in support of the amendments. Recent concerns about preserving the district's fiscal autonomy are completely understandable. However, it's important to clarify, the proposed charter amendments focus solely on the relocation of a school and the sale of a school property. These amendments do not impact teacher-related issues, curriculum development, or the district's ability to deliver high-quality education. These changes are specifically targeted at logistical decisions concerning school facilities, decisions that are distinct from the daily operations that affect classroom instruction, staff resources, or curriculum design. The district will still retain the flexibility to adapt to educational challenges and allocate resources to ensure excellence in teaching and learning. Moreover, the amendments prioritize transparency and public participation, giving voters a direct say in a significant, long-term decision such as moving or selling school buildings. These involvements ensure that important and structural decisions reflect community values without interfering with the district's ability to invest in student success or maintain educational standards. In short, the intent of the amendments is not to disrupt the district's fiscal autonomy, but to enhance accountability and public input in specific structural changes while leaving the core mission of providing an exceptional education completely intact. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Lesser, followed by Nicole Fox?
Hello, my name is Tracy Lesser. I'm a Ward 1 resident. I have one child at Beaver Meadow and another at Concord High School. I'm also speaking as a member of the Charter Commission, who recently put the charter forward. I agree with all the opposing viewpoints that we've heard here tonight. As a Charter Commission member, we worked really hard to make sure that there was equal representation across all wards and all different zones of the school district, making access to elected officials possible for all members of the public. The charter that we put forward was voted on by the public. By making amendments to the charter every time that the public, or some members of the public, don't like a decision that was made by the publicly-elected school board, we are opening ourselves up to retribution every time a decision isn't liked. We can go ahead and change the charter and reverse what the publicly-elected official said. Fiscal autonomy is really important for our school districts. We want to be a school district that can act quickly and can make decisions. We have city council that makes decisions. We may not always agree with those decisions, but we allow those decisions to happen. Maybe we elect different people next time, maybe we change it, but it requires people actually running for election to sit in front of the school board. The members of the school board who are here ran for election. They were elected by us, the public, and we need to move forward with the rebuilding of the middle school at the location that was voted on by our publicly-elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Fox, followed by Regan and Gilles Bissinette? Gilles?
My name is...
Sorry for the names, people.
You got mine just right. My name is Nicole Fox. I'm a parent of three students in the Concord School District, a member of the Middle School Building Committee, and board member of Concord Green Space. I'm speaking tonight only on behalf of myself and Concord Green Space. Concord Green Space led a grassroots effort over eighteen months to engage with the Concord School District to maintain the location of the new middle school on the current runlet site on South Street. We had many reasons related to our core mission of smart growth, equitable development, and climate action. We continue to believe the original site location would be better for each of these issues. That said, the decision was not up to Concord Green Space, it was up to the elected members of the Concord School Board. Once the school board voted in December of 2023, Concord Green Space's board met, and despite our deep disappointment in the decision, we decided to set this effort aside and focus our efforts on other upcoming projects within the city where we could make an impact and not continue to fight decisions already made. We are not affiliated with the Concord Concerned Citizens nor their petitions. While we agree with them that the middle school site decision is not in the best interests of Concord, we recognize the importance of building a new middle school. I have personally been a runlet parent for the last six years and have observed how desperately the students of Concord need a new middle school, watching the building degrade year over year. Years ago, I had hoped that two of my children might get to attend the new school, but the delays already experienced have made that a laughable idea. My youngest just started seventh grade. The school is desperately needed and should not be delayed any longer. While we understand the anger and frustration that has led the school district charter amendment petitions, the proposed amendments will jeopardize the independence of our school board, which allows the Concord School District to address the needs of our students uniquely in New Hampshire and has served our community for many years. The district charter undergoes a comprehensive review every ten years, most recently in 2022, and we believe that this is the best opportunity to make changes to the charter if necessary, when changes can be considered in a holistic manner. I sincerely wish the school board had considered how precious this independence is before they voted to disregard the resounding voices of Concord residents last year, as they were cautioned by former school board chair Cass Ardinger. However, we believe the charter amendments are not in the interests of students and will create legal ambiguity that will hold up construction of the school. Securing state funding is critical to limiting the costs of the new school to Concord taxpayers. These amendments and their potential retroactive application will put state building aid at risk. This is not a risk our students should have to bear. Concord Green Space does not support the charter amendments. Concord residents who are dissatisfied with the middle school decision will have the opportunity to vote for three school board members this November.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Regan Bissinette. I live in Ward 5, and I have a third grader at Krista McCalliv School, and I was also a member of the Sustainability Committee for the middle school. I strongly oppose the proposed amendments because I believe that they would just be used to try and delay the timeline for building the new middle school. I think it's very important that we replace the middle school as soon as possible, and that we're really overdue in doing so. I also oppose the proposed amendments despite the fact that I disagreed with the decision of the school board to vote to have the middle school relocated. I advocated on numerous occasions that I thought we should rebuild at Runlet, but at the same time, I accept the school board's decision because my perspective is that if I wanted to be the key decision-maker on this issue, then I should have taken the time to run for school board, get elected to school board, attend the meetings, participate as you all do and as your predecessors did. And so I did not do that, and I appreciate the people who did put in the work to do so. So, in conclusion, I do not want important school board decisions to be made by a majority vote of residents in Concord, because people may or may not put in the time and effort necessary to understand all the nuances of the issues, and that is what we elect our school board members to do. So, for those reasons, I oppose the proposed amendments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members. My name is Gilles Bissinette. I live on School Street. I'm in opposition to the charter amendments for all the reasons my partner said, but I'm here to read a statement from another resident who wasn't able to be here today, so I hope that's okay. This is from Jennifer Thompson. She's a resident of Ward 5. "I have a third grader at Krista McCalliv School, and I was born and raised in Concord. I attended Kimball Elementary School, Runlet Junior High School, and Concord High School. As a taxpayer and voter, I adamantly oppose the two amendments brought forward, and I'm ready to express my strong support for the continued fiscal autonomy of the district. The significance of financial independence for our schools cannot be overstated, as it directly influences the quality of education, the effectiveness of resource allocation, and the ability of our district to respond swiftly to the needs of our students. This autonomy equips the district with the flexibility to adapt to changing circumstances and emerging challenges, and is crucial in maintaining a high standard of education and ensuring that resources..." ensuring that resources are used efficiently. Our district's dedicated elected school board officials spend countless hours each month attending committee and board meetings, reading materials at home, responding to constituents, et cetera. The decisions made by the board do not come lightly, though, and they are thoroughly and thoughtfully researched. They cannot be answered by a simple yes or no question on the ballot by voters who may not have invested as much time in researching these issues. So in conclusion, if these amendments were to pass, they would limit the ability of the school district to provide an exceptional educational experience to our students. They would further hinder the middle school building project, and for those reasons, Ms. Thompson strongly opposes these amendments and encourages the board to vote no." Thank you.
Thank you. David Parker, followed by James McConaughey. Again, if you'd like to sign up to speak, there's a sign-up sheet in the back.
Hello, my name is David Parker, and I live here in Concord on Warren Street. I'm deeply committed to the Concord School District and its autonomy. First of all, I agree with what a lot of people said that are in opposition to the amendments, as I am. First of all, I don't think it helps to diminish the school board's either performance or autonomy. They work very hard, they spend a lot of hours making these decisions. You know, for two years, when I was on the board, we went over all these things. There were public hearings time and time and time again, and my view is that people came in after the fact, wanted to change everything, and with politics the way they are today, they demonize the opposition and tell me that the majority of people want these amendments. Three percent represents fifteen hundred. So that's what percentage of people signed the petitions. And I understand where the amendments would require a majority, but I still don't think -- I don't like being included in the community when the community is in favor of these amendments. You know, this project is not something that's just going to happen for the next few years. It's a fifty-year decision, and that's big. By the way, I have a pretty close relationship with Concord. I went to kindergarten at Conant School. When I went to Conant School, there was no Runlet, and we played in those fields. And we played in the fields on the Heights. We played on the fields on Manchester Street. Things changed. Policies changed, zoning changed. I sat on zoning board for ten years. I understand the complexity of land use and land regulation. The school board works tirelessly to understand all these type of things, and they don't randomly go about making decisions. If I could remind some people, frequently, the board had five, four decisions because we debated rigorously, and, you know, I don't take -- I stand up for what I believe in. And I don't think, if you look back, this board, I mean it through COVID, most of the time, half the people didn't like what we had to say and half did. Half wanted us to go back to school, half didn't. The board had to not only go through COVID and manage it at that time, they had to manage half the fact, and we had to make loads of decisions on yes. Okay, so thank you very much. I appreciate all your very good work.
Thank you. James McConaughey, followed by Meredith Tellus.
I'm Tim McConaughey. I think we would all admit, if we had to, that, as some have said, these amendments are not really about -- they are a reflection of the frustration over the school board's decision of where the school should be located. I don't think, in my mind, there's no argument about that. But they're a result of what I would say are decades of frustration with living in a city with an autonomous school board that sets its own tax rate. I've been here for about fifty years. Fifty percent of my taxes go to pay for the school system. One single public service, I pay fifty percent of my taxes for. The rest of the services that I get from the city or from the county come out of the rest of it. And after a while, after some time, you know, it builds up. So this is an attempt to get some kind of a grip on the school board's decisions. I think this is a minor issue, quite frankly, and I hope it gets some hearing. I hope that people get a chance to vote on it. But I want to say two other things. I've heard a lot of argument against going back because so many decisions have already been made. Money has been spent, plans are underway, it's too late now. It reminds me of the old Vietnam Syndrome, which many of you will remember, when the protests were enlarging across the whole country. There was still an argument that, no, no, we can't get out of Vietnam. Look what we've spent there. Look how many soldiers we've lost, how many people have died. Well, what we learned from that was it's never too late to walk away from a bad decision. The last thing I'd like to say is, if you are seriously thinking about, and I didn't understand that you have the authority to do this, not putting these issues on the ballot, if you are seriously thinking about denying the people of the city the right to vote on them, that would be a stunning development. And if these amendments are a problem for you and a nuisance or something that you wish would go away, I think denying the voters the chance to vote on them would just open the door to more efforts, you know, for the taxpayers to get some kind of a better grip on the school board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Meredith, followed by Ashley Bevel. And these are names I know, and I'm getting them wrong.
Good evening. My name is Meredith Tellus. I'm the parent of a child who just started here at Concord High, a child at Runlet Middle School, and a child at Abbott Downing Elementary School. I went to Back to School Week at Runlet last Wednesday. It was super easy because I live about a five-minute walk away, and it meant I was able to see the school, I could meet my kid's coaches, I could meet her teachers, I could see the school administrators, and it just made me -- it illustrated for me how she spends her days. I could put faces to names. I can really empathize with what she's doing every day. It makes it -- and it made it so that her teachers and I kind of can put faces to names and will be able to, you know, I'll be able to kind of stay engaged in her education. I really appreciate having that opportunity for my son and daughter. I do not want that opportunity for my stepdaughter. I want people on the other side of the river who may not have the same means and the same access to transportation, I want them to have the opportunity to be closer to their child's school, and I want the kids to have an opportunity to be closer to their school. We've known for years, in study after study, that kids who travel longer home-to-school distance, arrive at school later, show higher rates of absenteeism, have -- it impacts academic achievement, and in extreme cases, it can cause school dropouts. Those kids tend to not get as much sleep or exercise. If we're going to have the high school on this side of the river, we should have the middle school on the other side of the river. But more important to me, to where she goes to -- my stepdaughter goes to school, is that she has a new school, and I just want her to be able to have a modern facility with modern amenities and modern technology. At this rate, I don't know if we're even going to have a new school by the time she's in seventh grade, and I'm kind of surprised by a lot of the testimony tonight, which is talking about the cost of a new school and the tax rate. Schools are expensive, but we need a new school. It's time, it's past time for us to have a new school. So these amendments are a sledgehammer of a solution to people who don't like the process that we went through, but it was a public process. A lot of the testimony tonight also seems to have implied that people didn't have the opportunity to comment on the process or influence the outcome, but we do. We elected these officials, we had public hearings just like this one, we had the opportunity to call these people. You know, this is the process that we used, and we came to a conclusion about where the school should be located, and now it feels like the people who didn't like the outcome are just trying to delay the process further. These amendments are not just going to delay Runlet, they're going to delay every solution that the school board puts forward from now on. So anything that the school board, that we've elected, is trying to accomplish, puts forward as a solution, a bunch of voters are going to be able to come out and say, nah, we don't like that. But there's no alternative offered this way.
If you could wrap up.
So we're not a town, we're a city. We're not going to go to like three hundred people at a town meeting and decide, where should we put the next school? It's twenty-five thousand voters in Concord. We elect a school board to make these decisions, they made a decision, and we need to stick to it. Thank you.
Ashley, followed by Clara Deedle. Again, if you'd like to sign up, speak, there's a sign-up sheet in the back.
Hello. My name is Ashley Babladellis. I'm a resident of Concord in Ward Five and mom to two schoolchildren, right back there. They're here with me tonight, witnessing democracy in action in the school district. They go to Krista McCalliv School. "I have closely followed the conversation and vote for the location of the middle school. Throughout the process, I have remained neutral on the choice of location because a larger message rings true. The children currently learning and growing at Runlet Middle School need and deserve a new building. I know they will not be able to have the experience of attending a new middle school, and we need to do all that we can to keep this project moving swiftly. I would invite those who are so adamantly pushing back to stop for a moment. Put yourselves in the shoes of our current middle schoolers. Middle school-age students are in a developmentally vulnerable space as they lean into young adulthood. What message are we sending them when the adults in their community continue to push for delays on this important project? There are passionate voices on each side of this current issue. To the folks in the room and in our community who are actively working to slow down this progress, I invite you to pause, channel your much-needed voices and energy into other issues in our community, and I'd love to serve alongside you as we work collaboratively to support and promote the important work that is public education. Thank you, school board members, for your time, and to my fellow community members, I urge you to vote against these amendments in November."
Thank you. Thank you. Clara Deedle, followed by Nancy Gilbalt. Gilbo?
Sorry. I'm sorry. Good evening. I'm Clara Deedle from Ward Five. I'm here to express my opposition to both of these amendments tonight. The result of these amendments would only serve to further delay the construction of the new middle school and an increased cost to the taxpayers. When the conversations around building a new school first started, I had hopes that both of my kids could attend middle school in the new building. Well, this fall, my son started sixth grade at Runlet, and my youngest is currently in fourth grade at CMS. Unfortunately, due to the prior delays, it doesn't seem that either of my kids will benefit from the new school, even without the passage of these amendments. It is well documented that we need a new school. For the benefit of our kids, we cannot further delay this project. I trust that the school board members made a well-reasoned decision in December based upon their expertise and after much deliberation. Even if members of our community are disappointed in this decision, it was the result -- it was the outcome of a democratic process. We should not take steps that would only further delay this essential project and remove the school board's autonomy and ability to act quickly when needed. For that reason, I will be voting no on these amendments."
Thank you. Again, if you'd like to speak, you can sign up in the back.
Good evening, my elected officials. I have come to tell you that we need to not allow these to be on our ballot. Back in September, I was one of one who spoke to the fact that the new school needed to be built on the Heights area, the broken ground area. Reason being, the population of the kids that go to school and live in my community do not have the transportation, do not have the affordability to participate in after-school programs. They ride buses now, they ride buses to Runlet. Let me tell you, you say the population has decreased. Well, let me tell you, I can stand at my yard, and with the four houses around me, there's five brand-new kids coming in. They've just been born, and they are increasing the -- that's only four, five, four houses in my neighborhood that I can see from my driveway. So population is increasing. The Heights has -- all of the homes that are being built there have kids coming. They aren't fifty-five and older. I have really, really felt in that first September meeting that it was a case of not in my backyard. I'm a resident of Ward Nine. I border Ward Ten. Oh, no, yeah, whatever the East Concord one is. I border them. I live between Hazen Drive and 393. Talk about traffic? I know all about it. It can be handled. And if buses with -- I think the quote was that we needed two more buses to go down to Runlet if you build there, which the school will not be big enough in five years, that the number of sitting buses and the CO2 carbon that's coming out of those buses is going to be a problem in the South End. I was born in Concord, I went to Conant School, I graduated from Concord High School, I'm eighty-five years old, and I'm still saying the school board is elected. If you don't like it, run for the school board. And I am against both of these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Goldwasser, followed by Robert Deedle.
Hi, I'm Rachel Goldwasser. Thank you for having me tonight. I'll adopt by reference all of the statements that Meredith Tellus made. So I'm going to talk about something a little different. We didn't have that planned, but she talked about some of the issues I've been thinking about a lot. I live in Ward Five, and I'm speaking tonight in opposition to the proposed amendments. I have one child at Runlet in eighth grade and another in fifth grade at Krista McCalliv School. As a parent in the district, I deeply appreciate the autonomy of the school board. I also appreciate the focus that the board has had on educational disruption potential for children who will be at Runlet during the construction. My kid and his classmates were in kindergarten and first grade during COVID. He had to go remote for first grade as well as kindergarten, so he basically missed most of the first two years of schooling. We have lots of opportunities at our house, books, computers, grandparents who were staying with us, who were taking care of my child during COVID. Lots of other families did not have that. And so the fact that this board has taken into account the academic disruption that that age group has already seen and, you know, is still trying to recover from, in considering what it would be like to go to school in direct proximity to a construction site, is really important to me. And I understand my kid isn't going to go to a new school either, and he'll be okay. He at least got to go to Krista McCalliv, which is a beautiful building, so he'll remember what that was like. In addition, as a parent of a child who's at Runlet right now, there is not enough green space at Runlet for the number of kids who already want to be doing things like sports and outdoor activities and environmental activities. They have nowhere to go. There are four boys soccer teams. There's not enough space for them now. The kids who would go to school there during the construction wouldn't have anywhere to go, and there isn't enough space for the kids who would go to school in a new building. So we'd be building on a site that's already insufficient for the population of kids that's going to be there. I deeply appreciate the service that each and every one of you have given to the children of our district. I don't always agree with school board decisions, and I don't always agree with each of you, and that's okay. I, you know, I participated in electing you. I, you know, I participated in electing you. As other has, as others have said more eloquently, I do not expect a direct democracy, and that's what these amendments are seeking. I believe in our ability to elect and rely on the decision making of the individuals that we select and in your ability to consider the evidence before you and make a decision based on the needs of everyone in the district and not just some people. So thank you.
Thank you. Robert Dietl, followed by Charles Gilboy. And again, if you would like to testify, there is a sign up sheet in the back. Those are the last two people I have at this moment.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Rob Dietl. I'm a resident of Ward Five. I have two kids in the Concord School District. Frankly, I wasn't planning to be here tonight. I was watching this on YouTube until a few minutes ago, and I came down here because, frankly, I was getting very frustrated by what I was hearing. I say that with the full understanding that everybody has opinions, thoughts. One of the things that's wonderful about what I'm seeing tonight is the energy that everybody is bringing to this issue. So I want to express what frustrated me. And the first is that this amendment number one is seeking to undo a democratic process. We had a long, lengthy debate. This board exhausted countless hours looking into it, and our community is now saying, let's undo that process. That frustrates me. I don't like the precedent that sets. The other piece here is that these amendments have consequences beyond this single night, this vote, this debate, this issue. And amendment number two really goes to the question of who should be making these decisions? I trust this board. I trust this board because these individuals dedicate so many hours looking into these issues, and I think they're the right people to make these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Charles Gilboy. I have a daughter at Abbott Downing School who will be going to Runlet. I want to speak in opposition, first of all, to the, to the two amendments. Concord is not a town. We don't have a town meeting. We are a city. We have an elected school board that's elected to do a job. And these amendments are not realistic for a community and a school district the size of Concord's. So that's first of all. I also support the approved plan to build a new middle school across the river. I think there's a lot of reasons to do that. Equity in the community being one of the primary ones. But I also want to say, I think we need to tell the opponents more than just the decision's already been made. We need to address some of the concerns, particularly what's going to happen at the old Runlet site. I just say, you know, one of the things I've heard is it's going to be sold and a developer's going to pay to tear it down and develop a large multifamily complex. I think that's extremely unrealistic for a number of reasons, but I've heard other things as well. And I think to the extent we can address that and what the plan is and articulate a really clear plan in the community, we can help head off some of this opposition. So that's it.
Thank you. Naomi Werwell? If you'd like to testify, please sign up.
Thank you for holding this hearing and thank you for your public service. And thank you to the employees of Concord Public School District who are doing so much to create a joyful learning experience for our kids. We appreciate you. I'm going to speak, I am a Ward Five resident, and I can't speak on behalf of the most disenfranchised members of our community, which are our kids, the 4,000 people who attend our schools and do not get the opportunity to vote. I don't know what every single student thinks, but talking to my children and their friends, they want a new school and they're frustrated. They're frustrated to live in a community with so much anger and so much opposition to something they feel like they deserve and they know they need. They need a building that is safe. They need a building that is more accessible for every single child. And they need a learning environment where they can thrive. When members of the Concord Green Space Coalition first approached me about the rebuild at Runlet initiative, I said, I've spent my entire career working in public education. It's too hard to get anything done. We need the fastest, cheapest option for our kids. I trust you all to make that decision, and I will be opposing these two amendments.
Thank you. Jill, do we have any more signups? Sing none. We did have one letter, yes, submitted from Bill and Cass Ardinger in opposition to the amendments that Ms. Hastings is going to read into the record.
And you can have a microphone to do that.
Dear Concord School Board Members and Superintendent Kathleen Murphy, please accept this letter as a public comment on the two proposed amendments to the school district charter. We request that this letter be read into the record at the public hearing on these amendments on September 9th, 2024. We write to express our opposition to both proposed amendments. Cass served on the Concord School Board from 2007 to 2015 and was president of the board during the elementary school consolidation building project. Bill was elected to serve as a member of the last two charter commissions in 2010 and 2021. Under the current charter, the voters elect nine school board members to represent their interests and to make decisions solely with respect to our school district's public schools. The school board is focused like a laser only on the public education of our children. Other matters of importance to our city, such as roads, fire, police protection, planning and zoning, are governed exclusively by our elected mayor and city council. Candidates elected to these positions commit themselves to attend many public meetings, to listen to all constituencies, including our teachers, parents, and school district professionals, to investigate all relevant factors, and then make important decisions about how to make our public schools the best they can be for our children. If an elected school board member makes a decision that one or more voters disagree with, then the voters have the full power to vote against that member at an election. In this way, the current charter empowers the voters to control public school decisions by choosing the best candidates to represent their interests. This is our representative form of district, school district government. We oppose both of the proposed charter amendments for three reasons. First, they would undermine the ability of our school board to make important decisions about our school buildings in a timely manner. The proposed amendments require that any decision about a school board location or school district real estate greater than an acre be ratified by a majority vote at the next available election. The school district holds every elections every November. Requiring the school district to wait until the next election to finalize these important decisions would undermine the ability of the school district to take a timely advantage of opportunities that are in the best interest of our children. Second, they would require an additional layer of expensive extra ballot questions. Adding questions to a ballot in New Hampshire requires approval of the form of question and ballot instructions, which can result in expensive legal contests. The additional bureaucratic process would cost additional taxpayer dollars and further undermine the effectiveness of our elected school board. Third, the proposals are contrary to the voters' continuing strong support for representative form of government currently in place for both the city and the school district. Neither the city charter nor the school district charter provide for any voter ratification of important decisions made by our elected representatives. This representative form of school district government set forth in the school district charter was overwhelmingly confirmed by voters at elections in 2011 and 2022. In conclusion, we oppose both of the proposed amendments. We understand that the middle school question has raised concerns of a vocal group of citizens. A similar vocal group opposed the elementary school consolidation project over a decade ago. We think our representative form of government worked well then, and it is working well now. The charter empowers voters to express their support or opposition of school board decisions by electing candidates who represent their views. This approach is working for our public schools and our children. We do not support undermining the authority of our school board to take prompt action in the best interest of our public schools and our children. Thank you for considering these comments, Cass and Bill Ardinger.
Jill, has anyone else signed up? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. As I said at the beginning, we are required by state law to put these amendment, these charter amendments on the ballot. This is a ministerial duty, like certifying elections. So I will make a motion that we place them on the ballot, and I would ask for a second.
Second?
Second by Ms. Hastings. Any discussion? Hearing none, can we take a roll call? Sorry.
So we are moving to place these on the ballot.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Will there be any other motions, or is this the final?
On placing on the ballot? Yes. We then have, are able to have a discussion whether the board is going to make a recommendation on the ballot amendments.
All right, so roll call vote on placing the amendments on the ballot.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Oh, two microphones now. I just want to make sure everybody understands the motion that we are on right now, which is, the motion has been made to place amendments one and amendment two to the charter on the November 2024 ballot. It is a roll call vote. Ms. Boucher?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Hastings?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That is eight to zero with one absence. Motion passes.
Thank you. We can now decide as a board whether we want to make, place on the ballot a recommendation on the charter amendment. So I will take a motion if anyone would like to offer one.
I would like to move that the board oppose the proposed amendments.
Oppose, I'm sorry, not recommend. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Campbell. Discussion?
Do we have to decide that language right now?
It's, according to our legal counsel, is recommended by the Board of Education or not recommended by the Board of Education.
Oh, oh, okay.
So it's, there's no additional language.
Okay.
Recommended or not recommended.
Okay, great.
Discussion?
That was my only discussion.
Ms. Meeker?
So I, technically, I think we should amend our, the motion to say that the board does not recommend as opposed to the language opposed, but we can discuss that. My other technical question is, do we need to make separate motions for each amendment, or can it be done together?
We should probably do separate motions for each amendment.
Okay. Would you consider amending your motion?
I will amend my motion to say that we do not recommend amendment one and separately that we recommend that we not.
Well, let's do them separately.
Okay.
Ms. Campbell, do you agree?
I agree.
Discussion?
What else is there to say, friends? I think we're going to have some time to talk about this as we head toward November. I thank everybody for their comments tonight. I think some of us have already made our own individual statements about opposing these amendments and what they might do. I welcome more conversation about it. I don't know if tonight's the night, but I'm happy we're having the discussion. If anybody, like, I just want to take a minute, like, if people want to think about it and then have the discussion before we shut everything down.
Anyone? Well, I think for all the reasons that we've talked about on charter amendment one, I agree with the not recommend motion. I also have an additional concern, which, that in an emergency, I think someone touched on it, that there is no provision in this to relocate a school in an emergency and whether it's a fire or something worse. And, you know, I'm concerned about that lack, lack of flexibility, you know, for anything. I'm also concerned that, you know, I heard some folks speak tonight that, you know, they wanted, they didn't want, they wanted this amendment because they didn't want the price of the new middle school. And I certainly understand people having concerns about the cost as we continue to work to bring it down. But this amendment does not have people voting on prices of building in the future. It has them voting on locations. And in fact, you know, it could, it would potentially drive the district to build in a more expensive location with additional inflation costs. So, you know, we did do a side by side and people have different interpretations, but Runlet was the more expensive option. Both sites need infrastructure work and work on city streets. So I just wanted to make that clear. Anyone else have anything? Mr. Cotton?
Yeah, I guess two comments. One thing that hasn't been addressed tonight, and it's, it's more of a legal issue, is whether amendment one would have an retroactive effect with respect to the decision that was already made last December. My opinion is it probably would not, but that's only my opinion, and legal counsel would have to weigh in on that. And the potential, again, rises that there could be a further delay as a result of litigation over whether the amendment would have retroactive effect. The second thing I would just like to say is, I didn't hear anybody really speak tonight with respect to amendment two specifically, and I still don't quite understand. I understand the people who want to rebuild at Runlet. I don't understand the proposal that, I mean, I understand what it says, but I don't understand why there's interest in limiting the ability of the school board to sell an acre of land. There are a number of properties that the school district owns that are frankly surplus or potentially could become surplus. To limit the ability of, of the school district to sell until a vote happens, a vote that happens in November, which most of you know is not exactly the best time to try to sell real estate, just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, and I don't understand what, what the driving force behind that is. So keep in mind, and this is for people in the room, but also for people who might be watching or listening, there are two amendments here that are proposed. You don't have to vote the same way with respect to each of those amendments. And I would still like to have somebody explain to me offline, if you will, why amendment two makes any sense at all. Thank you.
Anybody have any further comment? Call a roll call vote on whether to, on the motion to not recommend amendment one.
Ms. Boucher?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Hastings?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. I will take an amendment, a motion on a recommendation on amendment two.
I move that the school district not, what's the language I need to use?
The Board of Education.
The Board of Education.
Not recommend.
Not recommend amendment two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Ms. Robinson, second by Mr. Cotton. Is there discussion? Go ahead.
I would just like to say, I want to reiterate Bob's comments. Of all the testimony we heard tonight, a lot of the amendments were very much paired together. I think that the amendments are reflecting a sentiment right now more than they are reflecting an actual logistical change to the charter. And I caution everyone to be very careful when they read this language. I've had questions about what it applies to, how it will impact the district. I think a lot of folks don't yet know what impact these will have, especially amendment two, because it's not specifically related to Runlet Middle. To that end, we're just not sure if this applies to that decision that was already made. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that nobody has really even spoken to amendment two, which is one of the reasons why I also oppose it, because I'm not, just not sure what the motivation was there.
Any further?
Yep.
Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, Kara. And I think to the audience and everybody listening, our community, please make sure, this is going to be on the ballot, right? We're going to be voting for this. Please make sure that you take the time to understand this on your terms. I've had multiple people in the past week say, hey, I signed something, and I didn't actually know what it is, but they're really passionate about it, and it's about community. I'm like, okay, well, actually, they're like, oh my gosh, I don't want to do that. So please make sure that you understand the implications. This is so much bigger than this board today. This is something that will have a profound impact on this district for decades to come. This is not about us. We will not be here when we feel the impact of this, so please understand it. I'd also like to add, last week, and I know, I realize this is extreme, but this month, four students in another state were shot and murdered due to school shootings. I don't see signs going around first gun safety in our communities. Where are those? We don't have safe gun laws. Where is that passion? I love that we have this engagement and passion, but all this energy folks are putting in, we have kids who are hungry, we have kids who don't have winter coats, we don't even have enough volunteers to make popcorn on Fridays. Please, this energy, keep it going and get engaged with public education, whatever way you want. It's not just about the middle school. There's a whole other world out there, and we welcome you to come and volunteer and help us.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, a call for a roll call vote on this one as well.
Ms. Boucher?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Hastings?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Any further business?
I had a couple of things that I. I have had the opportunity to walk the pathways in the woods at Broken Ground, and I really would encourage, and I've spoken to Superintendent Murphy and Mr. Dunn about getting a group together so that we can go out there and walk the area and see what we're talking about. And I think it's a really important thing for the board to do, so I'd like to see us get that on the agenda for as soon as possible before we lose, I noticed it's getting darker earlier, and it's definitely getting colder, if this room is any indication. So I'd like to see us do it before it gets too much later into the season. And second, we had some questions last week at our meeting about traffic studies, and I was hoping someone might be able to answer those for, I know Mr. Michaelovich is here, and would love to see those get answered for him.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
So we have had multiple meetings with the city since the district, can you hear me okay?
Yes. But could you clarify who in the city?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Yep. So we have had four pre-application development assistance meetings with the city. That is a group of city representatives. There, the city planning office is there, the assessors offices there, police, fire. Many different city offices are represented in those pre-application developments. The plan and our schedule has us submitting to the planning board in November, and the goal was to be on the planning board hearing schedule for December of this year. I know there was a question about a scoping meeting for the traffic study. The scoping meeting for the traffic study happened in October, actually, of last year, because counts were collected last year in, I think, November. So traffic counts were collected in November. The scope of the traffic study was discussed with the city's transportation planner and city planner. The intersections that were required to be studied at both the Runlet site and at the Broken Ground site were defined in collaboration with those, with the city planner and the transportation planner.
Does that answer?
I believe it does.
Okay.
Thank you.
A written summary of what was just said, because I can't take notes fast enough.
Yes, we can get you that. She's nodding yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Or it will be recorded, and you can watch it again.
And we have minutes. We can get you that.
So you have one more thing of business to do. So you have within seven days to file a report, and we need the board to authorize the chair to file a report, so I'll give you that language.
Thank you.
So that it can go to the two clerks and get it on the ballot.
Where the arrow is, my friend? This one here. I move that we authorize the chair to issue a report, an order pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 49B5 Rome 5, print B, consistent with the deliberation and votes of the board.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. So I need this part checked? Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
What?
For what?
Block? Oh, yeah, yeah. It would be for the non-young parents.
Hockey season has started, soccer season has started.
I will bring my children with me. It will be good for them.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Take a motion to adjourn?
I think it was already made, right? Huh? Oh, I moved to adjourn.
Ms. Robinson moved to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Boucher. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you all very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
[music][1701.63]